So I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Monday, February 24th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Dolic?
Please. Presenting the pledge.
The reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three, approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the February 10th, 2025, city council regular meeting minutes.
So moved, Anderson.
Second, Morgan Adams.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Upstain.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolic?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, presentations. Is Gewalt here? Gewalt Hamilton? No?
Caroline Sholley, please, here. No.
Okay. All right. We'll move item A down to item C and move B up to A while we wait for the Gewalt-Hamilton representative to come here. So item B, city council discussion and determination of the city's next investment cook grant application for sidewalk construction along Schonbeck Road between Viola Lane and Hints or Willow Road between Elmhurst and Schonbeck. So as I understand it, there's a representative for each of these different projects to speak. And Greg would be the first one for Willow Road. State your name and...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Wodzowski. I live at 104 West Marion Street in Prospect Heights. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about this very important and close-to-me project that I've been working on and trying to push for many years. Just like many, if not most, of my fellow residents of Prospect Heights, I did not choose to live here for its sidewalks or street lamps. When looking for a house back in 2017, we considered many different suburbs, including one prospect around the heights, Glenview, but we kept coming back to Prospect Heights for the tranquility and beautiful nature that the Hillcrest Lake or the Slough provided. We were really excited about the bluffs and also the fact that there were very few walls or fences between neighbors. So we actually bought a house here exactly eight years ago, February 24th, and we've honestly been very happy living here. We think this is a great community, a great council, and we're overall very happy. However, as soon as we sent our children to schools, and it was Betsy Ross and Penn Sullivan, I realized that there was a problem. And the problem was there was no safe passage for my children to walk or bike to school. And I admit that initially I had a very selfish motive because I really wanted my children to have a safe way to get to school. But I soon realized how difficult it is to, you know, have a project such as an addition of a sidewalk added. So again, it goes back eight years. Today, my children are over there. They're about to finish Percy. And my daughter Natalie's about to finish, and then her brother is two years behind. So I know it's too late for my children, but I still feel just as passionate and just as I think that the project is still very important for our community, if not for my children, it's for maybe my great-grandchildren or, you know, the future of our community. So starting in 2018, I've spoken to many of you. I've reached out to, you know, local politicians, including the office of Scott Britton. And of course, everybody said, yes, you know, we do need sidewalks. And even though Prospect Heights is known for not having many sidewalks, there are some exceptions. And I think that the street that I actually marked with a purple color is the half a mile distance between the intersection of Schonbeck and Willow and Empress and Willow. And it's exactly half a mile. That's the distance, or that's the stretch that does not have a sidewalk today. And it's a very, very treacherous road to find yourself on. So when you look at the intersection of Schonbeck and Willow, there's actually, there are four very well-marked pedestrian crossings. There's always a crossing guard in the morning and the afternoon helping children to cross. And there is an existing sidewalk going west on Willow and also going north to the campus of primary schools, elementary schools, and also going south to Eisenhower. However, if you look east of the intersection, normally there is no sidewalk or there's no crossing and or crossing guard all the way until you get to Empress Road. So there's really no safe passage to even cross the road for children. So I wanted to show you. If I may, a few pictures. So this is actually my bike walking ahead. This is what it looks like to... Let me see if I can make it bigger.
You can do from current slide?
There you go. Yeah. So this is what it looks like to walk. This is towards Elmhurst. And as you can see, actually, we're very lucky because this car, you can see, it actually gave us a lot of room, which of course they made it cross to the other lane. That's not a safe situation. But that's what you're faced with if you're trying to walk along this road. This is again, as you can see, there's a very little apron to the right. And we're talking about good weather. If you add rain, and forget about snow, even if you add rain, it becomes very muddy, and it's nearly impossible to find a safe way to walk along this road. Again, this is a picture of a most likely high schooler who's walking to, walking home along this road. And as you can tell, actually, she's very lucky because there is a little bit of room to walk. But they should make it further down. It actually narrows down, and it's very difficult. And honestly, I tried to walk many times, you know, this road, and sometimes, you know, cars really miss you by inches. And you know, for that, if you try to get on a bike, it becomes absolutely treacherous. We have someone on the bike here, and as you can see, there's, you know, they have to tread the road with the cars. And it's, you know, some drivers are very careful, but there are many that unfortunately are distracted and they don't have to care as much as they should. First of all, I think the drivers don't even expect anyone to be on this road, on a bike or auto walking. This is now, you can receive very well, but on the left-hand side, there's actually a boy on a bicycle, and he's trying to make it to school, most likely high school, going along the left side. Let me see. Okay. See, if I can make it a little bit bigger, I know it's not that easy to see. There you go. Okay. Supposedly. So why did I issue out myself to jot down a few reasons? This is not an exhaustive list, but a few reasons why I think that this project is very important to undertake for the city. Number one, this sidewalk, it built, would naturally connect to already existing sidewalks on Willow Road. So west of Schonbeck and along Schonbeck Road, both north and south, enter the sidewalk along Elmhurst Road, providing safe, walkable access to all five Prospect Heights schools, Hillcrest Lake, Veslu, Isaac Walton Park, and businesses downtown. Now then, point number two, I'm saying that this is actually, that it's very important because this sidewalk actually connects all five schools and provides a safe passage to school for all children in both third and fourth wards. Number three, it would naturally connect to a pedestrian crossing at Willow and Empress Roads, which currently remains a phantom, I call it a phantom crossing. There is no sidewalk to connect to, and it's basically the crossing ends at a dressing hall today. So there's really no way to walk or cross. Number four, addition of such sidewalk would make properties located along Willow Road more marketable to potential future buyers, especially those with high school-aged children who allow the residents of these properties to safely walk their dogs, jog, and bike. Today, the only safe way out of the properties is by car. Also, during the Fourth Joint Parade, sidewalk along Willow Road provides a great and safe viewing area for all residents who want to participate and enjoy the festivities. Completing the sidewalk project will involve a much-needed flood water management along Willow Road, further improving our city's infrastructure. Now, this is, this point is very important. So the sidewalk, if built, it would shorten the distance to school for many high schoolers, especially in the fourth ward, who currently do not qualify for school bus service to Percy to direct the distance of under one and a half miles. And it's, when it's measured along the non-walkable Willow Road, if taking neighborhood, internal neighborhood streets that eventually connect to a sidewalk, the distance increases to 1.8 miles for my family, and it's up to two miles for other families. So this is what I actually did back in 2021. Because of this issue, I appealed to a District 214 Board, and Bill Dusty was the president at the time, and he referred this case and this entire matter to Superintendent Dave Truer at the time. And he, within one day, he approved the addition of the route to school for Ward 4 for the children in our neighborhood, and also added a school bus stop at Pine and Willow Roads. And in my conversation with the board and with superintendent, they said that, yes, we're approving it on a temporary basis. And they encouraged me to go back to them and provide an update because they said that this approval could be reversed at any time. So they really encouraged us to push for the sidewalk. Building of the sidewalk would promote a healthier lifestyle by providing a safe route for children to walk or bike to school. It would also help decrease traffic congestion by eliminating the need for parents to drive their children to school. If you ever drive in the morning or in the afternoon and try to, you know, go down Willow or Schonbeck at the intersection where you have four stops, there's always a long line. I think that having a sidewalk, number one, it would be a lot safer for anyone trying to, you know, to walk the distance, but also it would eliminate a number of cars from the road. And also... One more slide to share. Let me see if I can just edit. In an unofficial survey conducted through Nextdoor app, and I know this is something that I did a couple of years ago, among residents living here at Elmhurst and Willow Roads, when asked if they favored building a sidewalk along Willow Road, 19 responded yes and zero responded no. Now, I'm not saying that there isn't someone out there who may say, hey, you know, I'm against this. But in my eight years of trying to push this project forward, I have not met a single person who would say, this is not a good idea, you know, we shouldn't be doing it. And it's even, I'm including people and residents who are generally against sidewalks in Prospect Heights, but they all agree that this is one exception. Now, I understand that even those, including local politicians and all of you, maybe in support of this project, everyone I talked to says, well, there's no money. Okay? So you have to really find a way to fund this project. And I know that this is, of course, I applaud you for considering this subject, this prospect of this subject or project for investment cook. However, there are additional grants, and I actually myself put a few of them based on my research, that could further help fund this project. And one of the most important ones is, I believe, the Safe Routes to School. And that grant, for those who don't know, it provides funding for projects that are within two miles of an elementary or middle or high school and promotes essentially walking or biking for, you know, for children to school. In this case, we're covering three elementary schools, one middle school, and one high school. So we're basically covering five schools by this one project. And it's important to mention that the furthest point from each of the schools is the intersection of Elmhurst and Willow. And they're located only 1.2 miles from Percy, 0.10 miles from Betsy Ross, 1.1 miles from MacArthur, and only one mile from Eisenhower Elementary. So they'll definitely fall under the jurisdiction of this program, of this grant. In addition, we have Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program to be used. We have Transportation Alternatives Program, People for Bikes Community Grant, Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality, and finally, Active Transportation Alliance. So in conclusion, I understand the city is looking at several projects and may consider many nice to have, but I consider this particular project a must-have for our community. So if the United States could put a man on the moon back in 1969, I believe that Prospect Heights can put a sidewalk on Willow Road before this decade ends. I ask you to prioritize this particular project, not because it's easy, but because it's hard. And most importantly, because it's the right thing to do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Robert? You'll be speaking for the Schonbeck sidewalk? You save your name and address?
You bet.
Just give me one moment.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Katsrow. I am a resident of Cressel Drive, Prospect Heights. My wife and I moved to Prospect Heights a few years ago, 2021. Often walk along Schonbeck Road. We're at Walker's. We often feel has our fellow community members here on Easy sharing the road with traffic. Even more concerning is that our children, well, in the not-so-distant future, use that passage to go to school. Now, I'm here this evening with a petition to request a sidewalk along the east corridor of Schonbeck Road from Hints Road down to Palatine Road, which is on the screen here. I initiated this process with Joe, our city administrator, about a week ago. So I haven't had much time to do anything in terms of city community support or petition other than make some flyers, which I appear. But logically, this is the right move in our opinion. It offers obviously a safe route for residents and students attending both Wheeling High School and the elementary and middle schools south of Palatine Road. So as my fellow community member said here, it's on the sidewalk and significantly reduce pedestrian risk, which is why I'm here today, encourage healthier, more connected community. After familiarizing myself with this process that you folks are involved with on a day-to-day basis, it seems that there is an investment cook grant, which perhaps could cover some of the engineering costs related to this project, meaning, of course, we can save money. I guess it all boils down to viability, whether it's this project or another, which one is most viable to the city, which is why I'm here petitioning this, perhaps it is more viable. So that being said, I respectfully request that you consider this particular initiative and support the investment cook grant application before the deadline, as I understand, in a few weeks. That's all I have. Thank you for your time and for everything you guys do to keep Prospect Heights safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. With that, I am going to open it up to, Joe, why don't you, you might be better at running this discussion.
Okay, sure. They're both good projects. They're both recognized in the comprehensive plan. I think everybody's aware Prospect Heights was developed as an unincorporated area. We didn't have a subdivision code, so many, many years later, 50-plus years later, we're trying to retrofit sidewalks to this. And I think both neighborhoods make a good case. And in fact, our comprehensive plan doesn't prioritize them, but it does recognize both of them as goals for the city in time. The little bit, just a little bit of background, we've relied heavily on grant funding for our other sidewalks, Schonbeck, Willow, that's Safe Routes to Schools. Safe Routes to Schools, they got a little thin in funding, so we've gone to other, we've gone on Wolf Road, we've gone to, oh, congestion mitigation, air quality, ITAP, access to transit. So each sidewalk has different eligibility for grants. But the one thing that's common for both of them is that we would, the city would rely on funding from Cook County Access to Transit, or I'm sorry, Cook County, which I'm getting all my grants mixed up, Alternative Transportation for the preliminary engineering and even probably going into the design engineering. We have to complete that area of engineering first as a prerequisite before we can show to, for example, ITAP. We'd have to go to them with that. And that's a good reason. It shows that it's not a savings account. It shows that the city has some commitment, skin in the game. So I think both of these certainly would be eligible as candidates for that grant, which is sponsored by Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways. And then from there, we would then pursue another grant, most likely, I think, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. You're right, Safe Routes to School is nice for that, but they've got a cap on funding. And either one of these sidewalks is certainly going to be more expensive for that, so I think we're going to have to go that route. But the hard part is to decide which one to go first. Either one of them, it's going to take several years because you've got, first of all, obtain the grant, and they're not, I mean, we're not the only children in the school or in the family. There's going to be other applications. We might not get it the first round. We keep trying. And then it takes some time to get through that engineering work, then we move forward for other applications. But Greg is right. You have to start somewhere. So it's a matter for the council to, as staff, we're asking the council to give us directions to which one. And certainly, I think, too, I don't want to give any, this isn't going to be, whoever doesn't get it tonight, this is going to be end of the program, will just come back the next drought. Right now, we've got a couple sidewalks in the pipeline. We just completed Wolf Road, and that took several years and about six different grant sources. We're working on Camp McDonald between, from Metro Station and Wheeling Road that would serve the Rob Roy area. And that was maybe a little bit low-hanging fruit because we're close to the rail station. There's eligibility that comes with, or points that come with that. We also have, in the pipeline, we have initial preliminary engineering work that's being done on the sidewalk, Elmhurst Road, from, to basically serve Wheeling High School to get down the Drake Terrace neighborhood and so forth. So all of these are good projects. And certainly, we're trying to do it. We're trying to leverage as much money as we can. We hope to keep doing this, this process where we pick out a sidewalk in the future and then work to obtain grants. But I think it really comes down to which one is the council most comfortable with proceeding with for a grant. And anybody who doesn't get it tonight, I'll assure you that probably next year or the year after, will be coming back for your sidewalk, so.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the Willow Road, the Willow sidewalk project requires storm water management?
They all will, I don't want to jump in on you, Joe, but they all will because, you know, you talk about culverts and that, that are open swales, or everything's not underground already. I think what you're referencing is larger drainage projects and just the location of the sidewalk and the swale that has to be filled and piped in order to put the sidewalk in. So they all will have an aspect to drainage. Willow would be more than...
Than Schonbeck.
Than Schonbeck, but Schonbeck's a longer road. I don't know, you know, where that comes in at, but I wouldn't want to do it just based on that, or not do a project just based on whether it requires more drainage work or not.
Because you, it was, the information I was reading was said that it was talking about a million dollars worth of storm water management work.
I've never seen a study that says that, that we have.
Well, that's what I was reading. So I'm just asking, I'm just asking the question.
Right.
Joe, do you know that?
That's, we asked our city engineer, Dan Strand, from Gewalt Hamilton, and that was his estimate. If it's not sidewalks, our challenge is drainage. So they're both go hand in hand. And that area of Willow and to the north, we would need storms to work both axes, the north-south, and then also going east-west. And we might find out more as we get, the engineering we did was just basically our city engineer kind of do a very rough analysis of that. With further engineering, we might find, oh, boy, there's more work to do. So basically, what we're asking for is which one to choose, at least for the preliminary engineering, where they identify in greater detail those types of issues. It could come back where, okay, this, we need to do more drainage work. The Wolf Road project was as much of a drainage project as it was as a sidewalk project. So I think that might be more challenging in that respect, but on the other side, Schonbeck has more distance. You could almost flip a coin tonight, and either one of these are worthy projects.
Absolutely.
And the other one, I certainly would, I think the city council certainly is committed to extending the sidewalk, so whichever one doesn't come up tonight, we'll be coming back to soon.
It's not a matter of, we would do 10 more sidewalk projects if we could, so please, not, believe me. I've been here...
What would you say, if you have overwhelming support from community?
And not just these two locations. If I even gave a hint that we were looking to do, we'd have this room filled with people from '83. I mean, this is an issue that's around town. And what Joe had said, just to give you a little more background on it, we don't do a project without grants. We are the poster child city for grants because we can't do them without grants. I think the Wolf Road project was 85% outside money, 15% ours. It goes beyond that, we can't do it, even with these projects. I mean, we can't spend the million-five that it'll take to do, you know, these projects. That project was, how big was that? Almost $3 million?
Over, yeah.
Over $3 million. So our issue is sidewalks and drainage. Nobody wants sidewalks on the side streets, me included, but some of these other streets need them. You know, I grew up in town here, my kids went to school here, I went to school here. The one thing I will say, though, and it came up about who uses them, these kids don't walk to school anymore anyway. Not saying that that's a reason not to do it. People are on those roads for other reasons, too, but it's not like it used to be, you know, where you rode through the neighborhood to get to school on your bike. I mean, nobody really walks to school anymore, but they still need the sidewalk.
My son does it every day. He bikes, actually. Unfortunately, the route is very long because I don't allow him to go along Willow. And also, if I may, and again, I'm over sidewalks on main roads. When you look at Schonbeck, I actually drove it today. I'm not saying it's not needed there, but there is a very wide apron you could, you could...
For some of it, for some of it. Not north, when you go north, like past the half moon, part of Country Gardens, there swells both sides, there's nowhere really to walk.
You are right, but there is much bigger, and it's, so I would, I would be much safer sitting there.
But one of the other issues we have, and the chief could talk to this probably, too, is about people driving their kids to school on Viola Lane. We have all kinds... kinds of trouble there with people queuing up to drop kids off to school. So I mean, it's not just the sidewalks, but just the better routing to school. I mean, schools are, people are driving their kids to school, and they're really not built to take that kind of traffic, so this is a bigger problem than just the sidewalks, too, it's just how people get to school. And you are right about the drainage, and both of these aren't Ward 3 anyway, I mean, all the sidewalk would be in Ward 3 property, that's Wendy's Ward, but it affects, it affects, it affects everybody in Ward 3 and Ward 4.
Depends on what side of the street it would go on.
Huh?
If it was on the south side, it would be Ward 4.
Right. But, but there is the issue of the drainage on Willow Road, it's not going to be cheap. This is, everything is interlaced, drainage, sidewalks, everything goes together, you can't do one without the other. And like Joe said, the Wolf Road Project was probably more of a drainage project than a sidewalk project. So like Joe said, too, we could get into it and find out, it's just still cost prohibitive, we can't do it. But having read these both very in-depth over the past couple days, the one thing I'd say about the Schonbeck Project is that there's a request to put it all on the east side of the road. About a third of that already has a sidewalk on the, on the west side of the road, that Arlington Heights did up until where they could stop. I wish it would have went all the way through Lake Arlington, but they didn't, they stopped when they got to that exit onto Schonbeck Road. So I'm not sure that the plan is laid out by the Schonbeck Plan is the right way to do it, because we'd be duplicating sidewalk for, you know, 25, maybe, maybe 2,000 feet of sidewalk, so we have it on the east and the west. But I'm just giving my two cents, and you can give me change back, council, if you want, that's still okay. But my two cents is, the Willow Road Project will allow people, like you say, you live east of 83. If you live in these neighborhoods, the reason why I think the Willow Road Project is different is, if you live in the neighborhood that's going to have the sidewalk attached with, the sidewalk isn't that important to you, because you can walk through the neighborhood to get to the sidewalk on Schonbeck, right? You can go on east or west Parkway, or north or south Parkway, to get to the sidewalk from anywhere in that neighborhood. Same thing if you're on the south side of Willow Road, with, you can walk through the neighborhoods there to get to Schonbeck Road. If you're east of 83 on Willow, you can't do that, you have to walk north or south, where there is sidewalk, but the sidewalk now is on the east side of 83, and they'd have to cross in the bad part of the road. This would allow people to get from east to west better. I don't think it serves everybody in, like, the neighborhoods that are west of 83 as much as it does east of 83, because that is dangerous. I see kids walking that all the time. I used to live near the corner of 83, or Willow and Elm, so I mean, I know that area well. So, you know, I know, I understand the nuance of why that one seems like it's better, the other one isn't necessarily fully developed, because, again, when, nobody is coming south of Hints Road to catch the sidewalk to go to the schools. And if you live in Country Garden, you can get yourself to that crosswalk that goes across to get to the other sidewalk on the west side of Schonbeck, and I'm railing off a lot of stuff here. But it just seems like, when we put these sidewalks, and it's not necessarily for the people who live right in that neighborhood, it's whosever on the other side of the street that has to get in there and can't walk through the neighborhoods to get to the next sidewalk. So that's, that's who it really serves. So, and I know, I know there's a big chance if we do, if the council does agree to go to the Willow Sidewalk, it might not go, because the drainage would be cost prohibitive, we just couldn't do it. You know, chances are, it would be too expensive.
Well, it seems very, very similar to the, or the existing sidewalk that connects the intersection to Hersi.
I know, it seems easy.
It seems, I know I'm not an engineer, but it seems like it, it would be just a natural extension of that sidewalk.
And you don't have to sell it, I agree with you, it's a usable and useful sidewalk, it's just, everything else that goes with it might not make it possible. And, you know, I think, you know, time being of the essence, because the Schonbeck one is not fully developed, because it's, you know, if you spent the time to say, okay, we'll have the sidewalk on the east side up until that crossover there, and, you know, so we can save some money and not have such a huge project, you know, that could be the next sidewalk. It's not that we don't want to do it, it's just that I don't know that that's doable. And frankly, this one might not be either because of the drainage, but I think we've got to rip the Band-Aid off, and...
There's one more we can find out, I think, we should do that.
Right, so that, I don't know.
And I want to say that if either project, I wouldn't view it as a waste if we come back, it's just a matter of time, we'd have to figure out a way to pay for the drainage improvements or other improvements. And, you know, I think Arlington Countryside proves that things that people thought, oh, it's never going to happen, with determination, we can do it, and money, mostly money.
It's just, it's a long-term process, and it's not going to affect anybody in here's kids, because it's not long of a process, I mean, it's just years and years.
But I'm not, I'm hoping for revenge, Joe.
Right, so, any questions or any comments?
I have some comments, um, you know, I've seen the last 36 years I've been living, you know, in the Schonbeck by Crest Hill, and I can tell you that there's been a lot of accidents with kids on bikes. I think the west side of the road might be the better way to do it, as opposed to the east side, because as you said, there is an existing sidewalk coming down from Palatine and Arlington Heights area, right? So it might be, that might be the easier project to extend from the west side, the sidewalk all the way down to Hints, that might be the less expensive, and I don't think you can have as much drainage, stormwater, you know, issues of doing that. Again, I'm not, I'm very much in favor of having the Willow Project, don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of both projects, they're both necessary. The question is, what would be the, maybe the least expensive, the easier one to do first, and then go on the second one? I, again, you know, I'm for both, but the question is which one to do first, that's really the issue. So, I mean, it's a tough choice, it really is, it's a tough choice.
I'm trying to make here's, everybody behind you here, these are just some of the neighbors who, you know, benefit from it, but it's, it's been a long time, so I want to say that I've been waiting a very long time, and talking to many of you for a very long time in my tally, but the petition, like you said, it just started about a week ago, so, you know, just, I hope you consider that. And also, the fact I texted you over the, on Schonbeck today, just to see the competing project, and I'm not saying that, you know, there isn't a sidewalk needed, even though, like you already said, half of that, of that distance is already, already has a sidewalk on the west side. And actually, but the apron there is so much wider, it's, it's just so much safer if anyone's walking on it. I'd love to have a sidewalk there, but in my mind, driving on Willow every single day, I just, I'm hoping that there won't be a tragedy, but it's just...
I don't want to leave Robert out a few months to come up and say something, I'd prefer if you guys came up to the microphone, too, because I forgot, sorry, Patrick, they can't hear you on the video if you're not at the microphone. So there's a lot of upset people in TV world right now, because they didn't hear what you just said. Do you want to say anything?
Sure, yeah, I only have one...
Come on up here, yeah, both of you guys.
In reference to what he's commented on the west side, I'm not sure, I've heard that may not be Prospect Heights, that particular side.
Parts of Arlington.
Yeah, but, but, so the part, so it cuts off, where the sidewalk cuts off, I think, a very short span of that might be Arlington, and then it goes back to Prospect Heights, but it's very short, so we could, I don't know if it's going to be skipped, it could be, I don't know how you could do that. It's a very good question, I don't know.
And then the other part that we consider, too, is the, the number of housing and population on each side of the street, what it draws to.
Right.
That's a factor, it's...
Right, yeah, I'm petitioning essentially, petitioning essentially for this community over here on the left, and as we mentioned, going south, it would be ideal to connect, I believe it's 500 feet, right, from Crest Hill Drive down to, what is that, I'm not sure what road that is, but nevertheless, the sidewalk continues from here downward to Willow, or to Palatine Road, should I say?
Right.
And again, I guess it boils down to viability, right? Does it make sense if we go out and do it? Do we have the money to do it? I just ask the council to think if, which one's more viable. Of course, they're both important, seems like the community backing here for Willow Road is just as strong as I would imagine is for Schonbeck, but, yeah, I guess that's a decision that's left up to the council, so. But I appreciate you guys hearing it out, and I understand, this is a long process, four, five, six years, just initiating it today, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may clarify one thing, the reason why he, we actually recommended it on the east side, only because as, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Robert, yeah.
As Robert mentioned, he lives Coral Reef, right there, just south of him is where Arlington Heights jurisdiction picks up, and there is no sidewalk at that, and there's no sidewalk from there south to, I believe, it's Lake Arlington Road, or whatever it is. So there'd be no way for Prospect Heights to put a sidewalk on that Arlington Heights Road section, unless we petition, and I'm sure they'd be okay with it, but we've never done that before, so that...
Sidewalk's not in the right of way, it's on private property.
Well, no, it's, it's the right of way, but it's, it's under the jurisdiction of Arlington Heights.
Right, that's the problem.
So that's why the entire...
Who jurisdiction? Schonbeck.
Cook County.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be in the Cook County right of way.
In the village of, history that...
If they, if Arlington Heights had their entire section with sidewalk, absolutely, and we'd recommend connecting to it. It's just there's a gap on Arlington Heights side that we have, we can't do anything with. That's why the whole entire west, or east side, I'm sorry, is what was recommended.
Okay.
And as much as we can, we try to keep it so there's connections, and the sidewalk south of Palatine is, is on the east side of the street, so we're conscious of that, too. It's, it's not a science, but we, we try to take into consideration a number of factors.
So, I mean, the east side is fine, too, I mean, if that's a more practical way to handle it, and that makes sense, then, then that would, that would be very viable. So, I mean, I, again, they're both, they're both really good projects, they both need to be done, no doubt, no doubt. Question is, right, the question is which one to do first? I mean, I mean, is there, I don't know, can we put, can we ask the engineers, can we get, which one would be the easier, more...
Think we got to pick a pony.
Yeah, right.
Like Joe said, next March is the next application for these grants.
So, yeah, so I would...
We will never know what's going on with Willow Road and what's required drainage-wise until we do something. So if, let's say we do this, and it doesn't work out dollar-wise, or too much drainage, the next thing we can do is make that application, it's one year, I promise you, that we'll not delay this project by, I mean, this is a six, seven-year endeavor to get this sidewalk in, I mean, that's how...
Who knows how many years, I think, I think six or seven might be overselling, or overpromising. I mean, so, I mean...
Wolf Road took a long time.
But it would answer our question on the drainage.
Yeah, I mean, so I've lived, it's no secret, right, I've lived here my entire life, my parents built their house when I was three, and I moved four blocks away, and I've been here ever since. Willow Road is scary, I mean, I don't even like to drive on Willow alone, Willow Road, let alone potentially let a school-age child, someone my age, elderly, any kind of walking would be off limits, any kind of bike riding would be even more off limits. I think bike riding is even more dangerous than walking, because at least when you walk on Willow Road, you can see people walking on the, I'm not even going to call it a shoulder, it's just where the, where the asphalt ends, you know, at least the people walking can maneuver off the pavement, but people riding bikes on there, oh my gosh, like, I don't even want to drive on there, because, you know, and I'm a good driver, I'm not, I don't really, but I don't even want to drive on there. And I see people walking dogs, there's no streetlights there, so it's super dark, so I think it's super dangerous, it always has been, I've always been in favor of this walk, obviously, we have a lot of hurdles, because, number one, we lack funding, and we do have a lot of drainage issues in our municipality, but I like the Willow Road Project, because not only is it super dangerous, but if we could tackle a stormwater problem in the process of evaluating adding sidewalk, I'm all for it. So for me, I don't think there's a question as to which one should be prioritized, because it's, it is so dangerous, and, like I said, I don't even want to drive over there and have to see people on the road. So for me, it's a no-brainer.
I don't totally agree with that, you know, I'll just, then I'll let, I'm sorry, man, I'll let you...
No, no, go ahead.
I mean, I've seen a lot of accidents on Schonbeck with bicycles, a lot of them, and it's dangerous also on Schonbeck, so I'm not saying I'm, you know, which one should come first, I don't know, I think that Schonbeck's the more viable one, only because it's not going to require, it doesn't appear to require the kind of stormwater management work that Willow would. And I'm not saying Willow shouldn't come first, either, but, but I mean, it seems like Schonbeck might be the more economically viable project. So again, I mean, this is a toughie, it's a big toughie, but I'd like to see the Schonbeck one go first, just to see, just to, because I think it'll be a lot easier.
If I could give my two cents, Mr. Mayor? First of all, I think we all agree that they are both very deserving projects, I'd like to see them both happen. And I also thank both presenters for doing your research and coming here and speaking up. Personally, I would feel more comfortable moving forward on the Willow Road Project, for much of the same reasons that Danielle just mentioned, so I'm not going to repeat all of those, but I think it's, they both, both projects have their dangers for pedestrians and bicyclists, but as far as the connectivity to all of the schools, I think the Willow Road Project is what I would feel more comfortable with. But like I said, they're both excellent, well-deserving projects.
I think Schonbeck is what, is the connectivity is to MacArthur, and then to Wheeling, and those two, the high school and MacArthur, and then Eisenhower, well, Eisenhower, that's going further down, but... I'm sorry?
Do, you guys have any comments?
I was in favor of the Willow, just because of connectivity to all the schools, and
my kids went to Hersi, and I drove up and down that road many times as well, and I favor that as a first.
No comment?
Agnostic, cool.
Well, I mean, I think Willow Road is a danger, I'm, I'm on the east side, so, but I usually don't go up and down Willow Road, so I don't know the, you know, the traffic, but I think Willow Road really needs a sidewalk.
So who do you need, Joe?
I think we have a, we just need direction which to make application for, and this is to obtain Cook County Department of Transportation assistance, which might go a little bit deeper as to the viability. What would be needed for this to happen if there's drainage work with that? And I think Robert, next year or the year after, will, will come back to Schonbeck. We have several in town that we received calls from, but these are the two that I think has had the most citizen interest.
It really is just, it's just a line, I mean, the next project would be that project, there's, there's no others that are as hot as those, as these two right now, so. And like, like Joe said, sometimes they happen not because they would score highest on the need, but they score highest on the availability to get money. That we can go out and do a project for 5% of the cost, because we can get 95% of it from someone else, that might move that project up, because we do want to get things done, right? And if we don't have the funding to do it, we just can't do it. So sometimes they do skip the line when something becomes available money-wise to do it, because of its connectivity to the train station, or something that makes it unique like that. And, but I don't foresee that coming up in the next few years, so, you know, we could look at that project next and get it defined a little better as to where it's going to go and how it's going to go. But I am going to say one thing, you guys all showed up with your Willow patches on, that's very good, but I'm going to ask that we might have to call you guys to do that again, to, for, you know, we're the little guppies in the pond, we got to go up the pond, so. We need a lot of people to be able to sometimes show that there's an interest in this, in the area, and that goes a long way with trying to get other grant money, or to make sure that certain grants happen, so.
Absolutely.
We will keep your name and number to keep this group together.
We will, so that is serious, the grant applications we've submitted, for example, Wolf Road, part of it, we also, we don't want to give a state a project with fleas. We had letters from Harper, from Pace, from Union Ale House, from other businesses... We had letters from Harper, from Pace, from Union Ale House, from other businesses to show that there was support for this. So that groundwork that you did with your neighborhood, hopefully, if we get to the point where we're submitting to Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, we would love to have that letter with all your signatures to show that. So, thank you.
We have to collect signatures, bring residents along, because again, we're all very, and it's not because it's, we just, we want a more comfortable neighborhood. It's because of safety. So again, I think it's, you know, you can see the support that, you know, we were able to gather within a week, but more than happy to help and present in front of, you know, other committees if necessary, so you have our support.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay. You guys can stay and watch how the sausage is made if you want. But we're going to move on to our next item. We're going to go back to Item A, the City of Prospect Heights Water Quality and Compliance with National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Report from Carolina, Joe of Gualton-Hamilton. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry I'm late. I have a sick toddler at home, and I'll spare you the details, I'll just tell you I changed my clothes before I left.
No.
Okay.
Be good.
Do I need to put my own in here? Or is it cute?
Should be in there.
I think we're, yeah, I think it's loaded.
Yes, yeah, I see it. How do I get this to?
He'll switch you.
Yeah, you will.
Sing to that.
All the way to the left, it's a fun beginning.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, just lift up there. Oh, got it, okay. This is probably better, because they probably would prefer not to keep her pot on this board. Okay. I don't know if you guys recall, but I've done this the past couple of years. So this is the MS4 program. It's actually a permit requirement through IUPA, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The intent of the program is to maintain stormwater quality and ensure that it is not polluted, and if it is, that that's remediated. So MS4 just stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And just for some background, it says year 22, because that's the year of the permit. It always gets very confusing, because it does not align with the actual calendar year, but that's what that indicates. So National Pollute Discharge Detection and Elimination System, NPDES. There's going to be a lot of acronyms. I apologize in advance. It's just the way that the program goes. So there are a couple of different measures that are included in the program. The two main ones that we assess the city with are the Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination, or IDDE, and Pollution Prevention, or Good Housekeeping for Municipal Operations. So basically, the intent is just to ensure that all of the stormwater systems, including drainage ways, are maintained properly and that there are no water quality issues, especially pollution. So some of those things that are looked for yearly are odors, colors, plant growth, flow. So these things are all just indicators that there's something not right with the water. So if there's a sulfur smell, that's usually a pretty good indication you have, an A smell, I mean, a pretty good indication of excess sulfur in your water. If you see soap soaps, if you see oil stains, those are all immediate indicators something's not right with the water. Just quickly, the permit itself is on what they call a five-year cycle. So every five years, they revamp it in some way, shape, or form. Typically, that involves adding more requirements or updating language. Usually, it doesn't really involve taking things out. It's always something additional. EPA is a little behind still. They were supposed to rate a permit back in 2021 and have not yet, so technically, we're still functioning under the 2016 permit. That's not a bad thing. That's just kind of a status update for you. Last I heard, they apparently just found the new permit in a box, because they moved offices, so they lost track of it. And I cannot believe that they admitted that, and it had a public setting, but that's what it said. So this is the notice that is most recently on their website, that it was supposed to be updated in March of 2024. Obviously, that didn't happen. Once, if it ever does get updated, there is a stormwater management program plan that GHA has put together in the past for permits, basically indicating that we fully intend to comply with all of the requirements in the permit. So once that new permit comes out, we'll update that to address all of the changes made in the permit itself. Until then, we'll continue functioning under that 2016 permit. Just about, a quick thing about watersheds. So Prospect Heights is very unique in that it kind of sits between watersheds, so you're not in the upper disciplines, you're not in the lower. It's nice in some ways, because your requirements aren't necessarily the same. There is a possibility that in the new permit, there's going to be a requirement to join a work group. That makes it a little complicated for you guys, since you're not technically within either of those. So that's something we would have to work with EPA on. I don't foresee it being a huge issue. You know, we can probably just join one or the other and call it a day. But yeah, that is a very unique thing about Prospect Heights. We do this program for, I think, 18 communities, and you guys are the only ones that are not within a watershed. So I do attend.
I don't know if I'm in heart of the group.
I do attend the upper disciplines, so the Lake County Watershed Work Group. And so if, in some case, the EPA needs proof that we are active, that would serve as that proof. So worst-case scenario, there is. And I think sometimes, Mark, you might attend the lower.
Both.
Oh, do you go to both? Okay, awesome.
Occasionally.
Okay, yeah. Anything is better than nothing. So if they were to come at us, we could at least tell them, you know, we do attend these. We are trying, even though we're not within either. So that's it. Nothing super exciting, but your water quality is good, even though you've got drainage ways, you don't have storm sewer systems. In some ways, that's better sometimes, so. That's all.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you. Item C, Presentation to the City Council of the City's Draft Website Redesign.
Yes, I can get up there in a second. While Patrick gets it up there. Every eight to 10 years with our website provider, Civic Plus, we get a free website redesign. So this is our time now to, there we go, our time now to get a refresh of it. This is at no cost, just with our contract with them. We started this project back in October, and we're looking at an April launch. So I will talk through just some of the design changes and show you what it will look like. All right, we'll start here with the banner homepage. You can see the main difference. We have some color changes. We've gone from this kind of maroon color that wasn't one of our main colors to kind of the red in our logo. Let me see my mouse. All right, perfect. So it's a simpler top menu here. It's a little bit less cluttered with the social media icons. You see, they're on the side now. They look a little bit sleeker. One change here, just a small thing, this bottom one, the icon will change. That'll be our e-news, that'll link straight to signing up there. One of the design features that they explained, which is kind of a small thing, just aesthetically-wise, you see the dark kind of gradient here to light colors as you travel through our graphic buttons. That was one of our main design choices, was we moved from the five buttons over here on the left side. We have eight graphic buttons here for the most accessible things that, when people go to our website, they're looking for. And that's one of the big things we wanted to have, is just we want an efficient website. People go there, they can find the information they want as soon as possible. That is on that page. So that's our, the top banner page. Onto the news and calendar, as you would scroll down on the main page. You can see on the left here, we got a nice upgrade with the calendar. Just aesthetically, that just looks a lot better. We have our news that we will put over here on the left side with it. There wasn't too much design, design-wise, or widget changes here. It's just, it's a refresh, and it just, just looks a lot better, in my opinion, here, on the right side.
We will be able to add, as you mentioned, the widgets, pictures to go along with the news and videos.
And the pictures, too, will look good here on the new city spotlight on the right. This will be a good spot to highlight events, get pictures from those events. As you can see, just, it's another nice, nice update here from the left side to the right side. They gave a little background. Everything's just a little bit brighter. So that's kind of just this change here. And I did mention earlier, the icon, the social media icon slide as you go down the homepage, and they appear on every page as you slide down, so that sticks with, and then if you ever need to go and click on that. And along with the, on the front page, I mentioned the eight graphic buttons. On each internal page, you'll see all eight graphic buttons at the bottom. All right, next, we have, this is my favorite part. Our footer was just a little unorganized, and a little spacing was a little off, so they just kind of condensed it, made a lot more organized here on the right. Color change, it's a darker blue, but I think it still pops a little bit more. So again, not too much design-wise change, just a lot of organization and kind of fixing some clutter, and a nice paint job on the two. And then we gave one example here of an internal page, just the city council page. None of the widgets or any information changes, but you can just see the logo here on the left. You don't have the background there. The top menu is just a lot cleaner and a lot sleeker. And then just about this internal page, we got rid of the individual photos, because each of your names are hyperlinked now, so you click on that link, it takes you to your page, it has your photo. And then this empty space here, we'd love to get, the next few months, a good group shot for our internal city council page. That was just kind of a little extra. But that is just where we're at right now. We still have a couple of months to go, but the main pieces are there, and we'll kind of tinker as we go.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So on the website currently, you know, click here for your local restaurants and events, and then when you click on it, it's just, unless you know what you're looking for, it's just an A through Z, you have no idea. And is there ability within our website to highlight, like, restaurant tab, or just category tabs?
Yeah, so that's one of the things, actually, that came up this week. I think there's a hotels and restaurants specific tab. We're going to put all of our restaurants and all of our hotels in a separate area, so they'll be highlighted a little bit more.
That's great.
Yeah.
That'll be real good. That's going to be a big help with the convention bureau, by the way.
The tab you were talking about, that's the business list.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
You can go to the link where it would take you to the North Shore CVB, and that's where that.
Which is currently.
But we're going to be doing it internal to our own website.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, not with that link.
We'll keep the link to the convention bureau, but we'll have it highlighted more, the restaurants and hotels in town.
Okay, good.
On our page specifically.
Another thing, too, I mean, Lloyd's, I mean, you're working on, you've made a lot of improvements to the site, not just for the new design, but in its functionality, with how, before, it used to be when you went to the agenda section, it would open up the whole thing, and it was really chaotic looking. Now he's got it so classed, unless you open it up. And there's some other things he's doing, so there's.
Yeah, just condensing things and making things look a lot easier on the eyes and to find the information you need, so.
That's fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you. We have no appointments, confirmations, or proclamations. Do we have any public comments for agenda matters?
No more turned in.
Okay. Item seven is a consent agenda. We have one item, Item A, which is Resolution R2511, Natural Resources Commission Memo and Request for Council Approval to Conduct Prescribed Burns in the Spring and Fall of 2025 in Prospect Heights. So there, in there is the application they made to the state. I believe it's the state, correct? That was the state application that we saw, or the memo. But they're looking, we need a, we need a motion to approve their request for these burns. They're not just doing them haphazardly. There's a process they went through for the applications to do this work. We get this every year from them, so.
I'll make a motion, so moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion or questions?
No, they've done it before. They've done a good job.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight, old business. A, Ordinance O2501, Staff Memo on Ordinance Granting Certain Variations for Offense Edition at 1 East Willow Road. This is the second reading, so we heard about this last meeting. So we need a motion and a second to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? Any questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion passes, so you can contact Dan and work out your permit. Thank you. Item B, Ordinance O2502, Staff Memo on Ordinance Approving a Special Use for a Sit-Down Restaurant at 1209 Unit B, North Elmhurst Road, Tacos Los. This is also a second reading. We heard about this at the last meeting, so we need a motion and a second.
So moved. Morgan Adams.
Second.
You want to come up to the microphone and tell us about your restaurant?
Hi, my name is Maria, and we're going to be, we're planning on opening a Mexican restaurant, 1209 North Elmhurst Road in Prospect Heights. This is going to be very mostly like takeout. We're going to have a few tables, you know, and we're going to be serving Mexican, you know, dishes like tacos, tortas, you know, some, no beer, no alcohol. So it's mainly like Mexican dishes, and we want to do it easy, not like hard, like not a grill or, so we are happy because of the high school, and so we think that's going to be a big, big, big thing for us, because of the students.
How many seats in that?
We're planning to have three tables.
Okay.
So around twelve.
There's a group of us, every Tuesday, we go someplace tacos.
Oh, yeah.
In town, around town. So it's a popular thing we do, so let's look forward to it.
Oh, thank you. It's how many?
About, yeah, it could be as many as 10, 12 people, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's how we want to start it right now, you know, because it's our first restaurant. My husband's been working on a restaurant for 25 years, so we came to, okay, if you're working for somebody else, why not, you know? If you have the experience, then, yeah, so.
Good, good. I wish you success.
Yes. So you guys are welcome, so do come anytime, so.
Thank you.
When do you plan on opening?
Well, as soon as possible. As soon as we get the permits and everything. I mean, it's a whole, you know, remodel thing where I already start purchasing the kitchen equipment and everything, so just as soon as we get the permits, we'll start. So maybe by next month.
They've already got the application on file after last meeting, so.
Yeah, good, good.
Yeah, so we're hoping, you know, end of March, hopefully, so, you know, when we get our good weather. It's going to be good.
Well, thank you.
Sure. And we're going to have a taco Tuesday. You're going to have, and you're going to have a good schedule for, you know, everyone, especially on Tuesdays. We're kind of doing other things for students and everyone, so.
And a ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Yeah, any kind of a grand opening or ribbon cutting, please let us know, let Peter Falcone know, and we will attend.
Yeah, as soon as we have a date, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
First and a second?
Yeah.
We did?
All right. We just need a roll call.
So we have a first and a second? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolek.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thank you. Item nine, new business. Item nine, new business. Ordinance, Item A, Ordinance 02503, Staff Memo on Ordinance Approving of Sale, Donation, and Destruction of Surplus Property. This is a first reading. Cho, is this mostly just equipment?
Just the equipment supplies that are, have become obsolete, and by law, we have to declare them surplus.
Okay, this is just the first reading, so we'll approve this at our next meeting. Item B, Resolution R 2512, Staff Memo on Resolution Approving a 2025 Pavement Assessment Proposal by Gualt Hamilton Associates for a Not-To-Exceed Budget of $15,500. We're going to discuss it, let's get it on the table, so we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark? Just so everybody knows what this is.
Yes, sir. This is the needed first step in evaluating all the city's streets as we move on towards our progress of repairing and replacing many of our roadways. We know that we have aging infrastructure, roadways, and this assessment will let us really prioritize what needs to get done first, and give us an idea of what our expenses are going to be as we move towards funding in the next couple of years, so.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10, Staff and Elected Officials and Commissioner Reports. Item A is our January Financial Report presented by Assistant Finance Director Tannahill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council members, I'd like to present the January Financial Report. Seventy-six, seventy-six percent of the year has passed so far. With that being said, we have total city revenues representing 64% of the budget, and total expenses are 55% of the budget. All the major revenue sources that we receive are within the budget and numbers we have for this year, as is the water and sewer revenues are within budget. Couple of notes, the Places for Eating Tax, part is showing better than expected, over budget, about 90% over budget at this time of the year. We also have our interest income, again, is still coming in strong, we're over 100% of budget and numbers, hopefully that will continue in the future. We also have the DEA seizure payment, we had a big amount come in, over $296,000 came in from the federal government to release some of the money, and that is with an officer who's assigned to the DEA Task Force, and when he works cases with the DEA, the city's able to recover some of that money that's seized when he does those cases, a percentage of that, so close to $300,000 came in last month on that. We also continue to work on the budget for next year, the FY 25-26 budget. This week, we'll be with staff members, doing some fine tuning on the draft budget, so we can have a presentation for next month's meeting on the March 10th and March 24th for council to review and go over, so. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you, if that gets you the information at a later date. Any questions? I think we're getting cold.
Thank you, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start, we'll keep on the right side here. Anything, Mark?
No, sir, not.
Dan?
A quick update report on the Sky Harbor project. Sky Harbor has, is doing the demolition of the Ramada in preparation for their project to build new executive hangars at CEA. We've gone through the plan review process and have issued the permit to Chapel. They are beginning to do their demolition processes, and the target is that be 100% done with demolition by the second week of May, so I expect to see construction documents sometime soon, hopefully in April for the first phase. So I'll keep you abreast of when we get more information, and that's what I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Cho?
Yes, tonight I have good news to report on levy 37. There's three parts to this, that the city's been involved in closely for some time. One is the gate closure. As we reported earlier, the first bid went out, was over twice what the engineer's estimate was, and it was unaffordable. So we've gone back, we reviewed the specifications with Illinois Department of Natural Resources, we've taken some things out, we've made some adjustments. It will be going out to bid this coming month, in March. We also think that the timing was wrong, that the last bid that went out was through IDNR. It was advertised during the holidays, and we only received one bid response, and so that's always, it kind of leaves a municipality uncomfortable. But we will be going back, and it's anticipated that the bids will be more favorable. The second item is the wall reconstruction where the auto crash was. We received, after some time, we received authorization from IDOT for permission to go forward with that, so we'll be putting the specifications of that. And then possibly, most importantly, we partnered with Mount Prospect, which is also affected, and that is for the remapping of the floodplain certification of the levy. Those are items that have to be completed before we can remove people from the flood insurance requirement, so that's, that's the real cost figure. We want to get that on a parallel track, so we don't lose any time. Certainly, the gate closure has to be completed, the wall has to be completed, but we've got on a parallel track, and they will be submitting application to FEMA, they thought maybe, probably about June. So this month, we've got positive news on levy 37.
That is good news.
Yeah, that's great news.
Okay. Lloyd?
Nothing for me.
Chief?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. February 15th and 16th, we completed our oral interviews for the new police officer applicants, still an ongoing process. We should have that list finalized pretty soon. We currently sit a one officer short with one other in the police academy. We had two recent promotions. Sergeant Keith O'Connor has been promoted to detective sergeant, and Detective Brad Sigsworth will be replacing him and going off to the Drug Enforcement Administration assignment that Finance Director Tannahill mentioned. Lastly, this upcoming Thursday and the 27th is our annual PD Award Ceremony at 6:30 PM at the Old Orchard Country Club. That email has gone out. Other than that, things are very good.
Thank you. We'll stay on the left with elected?
No.
Wendy?
No.
No report.
No.
Nothing? Okay. All right, we'll move on to approval of warrants. Will Deputy Clark read the expenditures of wire transfers?
Yes. For the approval expenditures tonight, we have a total of $312,202.40. We have wire payment, 2725 payroll, $193,787.56. A January IMRF payment of $16,853.65, bringing a total warrant amount of $522,843.61 tonight.
And we need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dulick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any requests for public comment on non-agenda matters?
Nope, not tonight's.
Okay. We have no need for an executive session, and therefore, no action on the executive session is required. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Anderson?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we're adjourned.
Thank you.